Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachik?
Here.
Mayor O'Meara? Here.
Council will stand in session, item two.
Item two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to implement policies to incentivize and require city employees to get vaccinated against COVID-19, provided for certain exceptions and accommodations, establishing penalties for failure to comply, approving leave and benefit incentives, and other policies to encourage all city employees to get vaccinated against COVID-19, and reaffirming that the COVID-19 pandemic constitutes a continuing local emergency that requires local measures to mitigate its impacts.
City manager's communication number 266, dated August 13th, is received and to make part of the record. At this time, the city manager will make a presentation. But before I give the mic over to our city manager, I wanted to talk about why we're here. We, unfortunately, as a country, and as a state, and as a county, have seen the unfortunate rise of COVID-19 cases in our community. Just today, we saw 272 new cases in Pima County. The percentage of positivity is 7.9%, and the numbers around the state of COVID-19 positive patients and hospitalization are going up. You know, this has been 18 months of a global pandemic that my colleagues and I, and the city manager, all of our entire team, every city employee, have had to navigate. And a year ago, around this time, we saw a surge in cases around the country. At that time, a year ago, we didn't have clear solutions. We didn't have an antidote. We had going home as a possibility, as a tool, to protect our families, and we had masks. And this council helped me, as the mayor of the city of Tucson, protect residents in our city. And we've had to take incredibly difficult decisions together. And we have been absolutely responsive and responsible to this global pandemic. We've done everything we possibly can. But, you know, we unfortunately are seeing the surge in cases again going throughout the country, throughout the world. But the different element of all of this is that we have an antidote. We have a free, safe, reliable vaccine. And what we're seeing now is rising cases of unvaccinated individuals, and breakthrough cases of those that are immunodeficient and vulnerable, and we're seeing a rise in cases in children. The city of Tucson, and me as the mayor of our great city, and as an employer, we have the legal duty and the legal obligation to provide and maintain a safe and healthy workplace for its employees. If this were a decision just about personal health, that would be one thing. The decision to not get vaccinated does not just affect personal health. It unjustly exposes others to the risk of illness, including coworkers and members of the public. It puts children under the age of 12 who are not eligible to receive the vaccine at increased rate of exposure to COVID-19. As the mother of an 11-year-old that cannot be vaccinated, I cannot do that to my child. I cannot put her at risk, or other children under 12, at risk of this illness. Just yesterday, Dr. Fauci stated that quantitatively, you will see more children in the hospital. And it unfairly puts our businesses at risk of declining economically because of people staying away and concerned about the Delta variant in our community. This is not about individual liberty. It is about protecting the health and the rights of others to not be unnecessarily exposed to COVID-19 through no fault of their own. I do encourage private employers to follow the city of Tucson's lead. Banner University has been leading here in this state, and I would suggest that other companies and private employers, as well as other jurisdictions, do the same. I also urge my colleagues on the Pima County Board of Supervisors to require masks in all schools in Pima County from K through 12. When the health of our children is at stake, sometimes we have no choice but to make difficult decisions. And that's what us here, as a team, this mayor and council, have done the past 18 months. You know, just with a personal story before I send it for the logistics of what the city manager is thinking, just this morning, we found out about a father-in-law of an employee that I have here at the mayor's office that died of COVID-19. He was a veteran, he was vaccinated, but he was immunodeficient. And it is unfair for others. Personal liberties, once they go beyond your personal liberties and inhibit the health and safety of others, are no longer just your liberties. That is when people infringe on other people's liberty and choice. And so, we have a good discussion ahead of us, but I did want to open up with some facts and the information that we have in front of us. So, Mr. Manager, if you'd like to jump in and talk about what you've been, you and your executive leadership team, have been thinking about.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for your time and for being here today. I will just make a few comments that sets the stage for the process. You asked me to explore options. This past Tuesday, you asked me to come back to you. I apologize that it's so late on a Friday. I was hopeful that we could do it sooner, but because of the complexity of the issue and because of trying to get all the various stakeholders at least information, it is this late hour on a Friday, but I thank you so much for your attention here. So, this is a tough decision, tough topic. Mayor, I think I won't repeat what you said. I think that the council has made decisions over the last 18 months, very difficult decisions. And this is right in the mix in terms of the difficulty and the potentially divisiveness of this topic. I've labored many, many hours throughout through the various consequences and prayed over this because it is a defining moment for us and our community. I don't take mandates of any sort lightly. I certainly don't take this one lightly. I've heard from many employees, mayor and council, you know, I've been sharing with you what I've been receiving, and I did that very much by design because I wanted you to have the full amount of information, everything that's out there that I'm hearing, so that it helps you to make whatever decision you end up making today. And I will also just quickly shout out to the employees. I appreciate direct communication. It's one of our core values, and I think that when I hear different viewpoints and consider them, it makes the decision a better one ultimately. And so, I thank folks that took the time to do that. I try to respond to most all of you. As I've considered the varied beliefs and concerns that have been expressed here, and not only today, but over the last several weeks, I have incorporated, I've actually tweaked some of the recommendations from what I was initially thinking, based on feedback I got at Labor Council and some of the other stakeholders that have weighed in on this. I stand by my recommendation for the city of Tucson to mandate vaccines, as outlined in the materials. I'm also clear that this recommendation will not align with some employees' beliefs, so I'm very clear on that. And I am understanding of that disagreement, if you will, or at least different belief system. In summary, the recommendation is as follows, and they're in materials. I'll just summarize it for you and get into whatever detail you'd like. I'm going to read it so I don't miss state. First of all, there's a recommendation for incentives. There's two incentives. One incentive is for, and these are for incentives for people that have either been vaccinated or will receive the vaccine by August 20th. So, this will apply to those that have already been vaccinated, and by the way, a sincere thanks to those that have already been vaccinated and up to this point. So, first of all, one floating holiday, to use this calendar year, and really looking at the flexibility there, but providing what I'll call an additional floating holiday for employees. That will, you know, one of the questions that I'll get asked, I'm sure, is what's the cost of that? I'm not expecting costs associated with that, just from a scheduling standpoint. I think we can accomplish it without, because it's not a city holiday, it doesn't require shutdown and so forth. If there is cost, it'll be minor, and we will be able to absorb it within our budget. Second recommendation as an incentive is to provide, and I'm going to call a restoration of 80 hours of pandemic leave. My intent there is to basically give everyone 80 hours of pandemic leave, restoring what was originally allocated by the mayor and council, deducting out those hours that have already previously been used. So, for example, if someone had taken time using pandemic leave a year ago, that time would be deducted from those 80 hours, keeping in mind that a lot of our essential workers, public safety, yes, water, IT, were not allowed to take pandemic leave because of the type of work that they do and the fact that they fell into an essential worker category. So, I would restore that, if you will, and they would have access to that leave for use for pandemic purposes. I have considered a potential for some type of payout of that. I am not recommending that right now because I do not know what that's going to look like. We may have this conversation...
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Ms. Lee?
Here.
Mr. Fimbres?
Here.
Mr. Kazachik?
Here.
Mayor O'Meara?
Here.
Council will stand in session, item two.
Item two is an ordinance authorizing and directing the city manager to implement policies to incentivize and require city employees to get vaccinated against COVID-19, provided for certain exceptions and accommodations, establishing penalties for failure to comply, approving leave and benefit incentives, and other policies to encourage all city employees to get vaccinated against COVID-19, and reaffirming that the COVID-19 pandemic constitutes a continuing local emergency that requires local measures to mitigate its impacts.
City manager's communication number 266, dated August 13th, is received and to make part of the record. At this time, the city manager will make a presentation. But before I, you know, give the mic over to our city manager, I wanted to talk about why we're here. We, unfortunately, as a country, and as a state, and as a county, have seen the unfortunate rise of COVID-19 cases in our community. Just today, we saw 272 new cases in Pima County. The percentage of positivity is 7.9%, and the numbers around the state of COVID-19 positive patients and hospitalization are going up. You know, this has been 18 months of a global pandemic that my colleagues and I, and the city manager, all of our entire team, every city employee, have had to navigate. And a year ago, around this time, we saw a surge in cases around the country. At that time, a year ago, we didn't have clear solutions. We didn't have an antidote. We had going home as a possibility, as a tool, to protect our families, and we had masks. And this council helped me, as the mayor of the city of Tucson, protect residents in our city. And we've had to take incredibly difficult decisions together. And we have been absolutely responsive and responsible to this global pandemic. We've done everything we possibly can. But, you know, we unfortunately are seeing the surge in cases again going throughout the country, throughout the world. But the different element of all of this is that we have an antidote. We have a free, safe, reliable vaccine. And what we're seeing now is rising cases of unvaccinated individuals, and breakthrough cases of those that are immunodeficient and vulnerable, and we're seeing a rise in cases in children. The city of Tucson, and me as the mayor of our great city, and as an employer, we have the legal duty and the legal obligation to provide and maintain a safe and healthy workplace for its employees. If this were a decision just about personal health, that would be one thing. The decision to not get vaccinated does not just affect personal health. It unjustly exposes others to the risk of illness, including coworkers and members of the public. It puts children under the age of 12 who are not eligible to receive the vaccine at increased rate of exposure to COVID-19. As the mother of an 11-year-old that cannot be vaccinated, I cannot do that to my child. I cannot put her at risk, or other children under 12, at risk of this illness. Just yesterday, Dr. Fauci stated that quantitatively, you will see more children in the hospital. And it unfairly puts our businesses at risk of declining economically because of people staying away and concerned about the Delta variant in our community. This is not about individual liberty. It is about protecting the health and the rights of others to not be unnecessarily exposed to COVID-19 through no fault of their own. I do encourage private employers to follow the city of Tucson's lead. Banner University has been leading here in this state, and I would suggest that other companies and private employers, as well as other jurisdictions, do the same. I also urge my colleagues on the Pima County Board of Supervisors to require masks in all schools in Pima County from K through 12. When the health of our children is at stake, sometimes we have no choice but to make difficult decisions. And that's what us here, as a team, this mayor and council have done the past 18 months. You know, just with a personal story before I send it for the logistics of what the city manager is thinking, just this morning, we found out about a father-in-law of an employee that I have here at the mayor's office that died of COVID-19. He was a veteran, he was vaccinated, but he was immunodeficient. And it is unfair for others. Personal liberties, once they go beyond your personal liberties and inhibit the health and safety of others, are no longer just your liberties. That is when people infringe on other people's liberty and choice. And so, we have a good discussion ahead of us, but I did want to open up with some facts and the information that we have in front of us. So, Mr. Manager, if you'd like to jump in and talk about what you've been, you and your executive leadership team, have been thinking about.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. Thank you for your time and for being here today. I will just make a few comments that sets the stage for the process. You asked me to explore options. This past Tuesday, you asked me to come back to you. I apologize that it's so late on a Friday. I was hopeful that we could do it sooner, but because of the complexity of the issue and because of trying to get all the various stakeholders at least information, it is this late hour on a Friday, but I thank you so much for your attention here. So, this is a tough decision, tough topic. Mayor, I think I won't repeat what you said. I think that the council has made decisions over the last 18 months, very difficult decisions. And this is right in the mix in terms of the difficulty and the potentially divisiveness of this topic. I've labored many, many hours throughout through the various consequences and prayed over this because it is a defining moment for us and our community. I don't take mandates of any sort lightly. I certainly don't take this one lightly. I've heard from many employees, mayor and council, you know, I've been sharing with you what I've been receiving, and I did that very much by design because I wanted you to have the full amount of information, everything that's out there that I'm hearing, so that it helps you to make whatever decision you end up making today. And I will also just quickly shout out to the employees. I appreciate direct communication. It's one of our core values, and I think that when I hear different viewpoints and consider them, it makes the decision a better one ultimately. And so, I thank folks that took the time to do that. I try to respond to most all of you. As I've considered the varied beliefs and concerns that have been expressed here, and not only today, but over the last several weeks, I have incorporated, I've actually tweaked some of the recommendations from what I was initially thinking, based on feedback I got at Labor Council and some of the other stakeholders that have weighed in on this. I stand by my recommendation for the city of Tucson to mandate vaccines, as outlined in the materials. I'm also clear that this recommendation will not align with some employees' beliefs, so I'm very clear on that. And I am understanding of that disagreement, if you will, or at least different belief system. In summary, the recommendation is as follows, and they're in materials. I'll just summarize it for you and get into whatever detail you'd like. I'm going to read it so I don't miss state. First of all, there's a recommendation for incentives. There's two incentives. One incentive is for, and these are for incentives for people that have either been vaccinated or will receive the vaccine by August 20th. So, this will apply to those that have already been vaccinated, and by the way, a sincere thanks to those that have already been vaccinated and up to this point. So, first of all, one floating holiday, to use this calendar year, and really looking at the flexibility there, but providing what I'll call an additional floating holiday for employees. That will, you know, one of the questions that I'll get asked, I'm sure, is what's the cost of that? I'm not expecting costs associated with that, just from a scheduling standpoint. I think we can accomplish it without, because it's not a city holiday, it doesn't require shutdown and so forth. If there is cost, it'll be minor, and we will be able to absorb it within our budget. Second recommendation as an incentive is to provide, and I'm going to call a restoration of 80 hours of pandemic leave. My intent there is to basically give everyone 80 hours of pandemic leave, restoring what was originally allocated by the mayor and council, deducting out those hours that have already or previously been used. So, for example, if someone had taken time using pandemic leave a year ago, that time would be deducted from those 80 hours, keeping in mind that a lot of our essential workers, public safety, yes, water, IT, were not allowed to take pandemic leave because of the type of work that they do and the fact that they fell into an essential worker category. So, I would restore that, if you will, and they would have access to that leave for use for pandemic purposes. I have considered a potential for some type of payout of that. I am not recommending that right now because I do not know what that's going to look like. We may have this conversation... not allowed to take pandemic leave because of the type of work that they do and the fact that they fell into an essential worker category. So I would restore that, if you will, and and they would have access to that to that that leave for use for pandemic purposes. I have considered a potential for sometime of some type of payout of that. I am not recommending that right now because I do not know what that's going to look like. We may have this conversation a year from now, but at this point, I am not making that recommendation just based on not knowing what the what the pandemic will look like. The intent is to encourage employees that have not been vaccinated to do so by August 20th. August 20th is next Friday. That gives a week, basically. I've I've had commitments from many departments and and the some of the Labor Council participants to assist in that and basically encourage folks to get their vaccine that haven't been vaccinated. My goal for that is if we can reach 500 new employees vaccinated, that I think we're on our way. That gives us about a 95% vaccination rate based on an assumption that we'll have about 200 employees that will ask for exemptions, either in medical or religious exemptions to the to the vaccine. Should we not hit the 500 mark on Friday, the 20th, then I would recommend that it become mandatory. The vaccine is mandatory by August 24th. The 24th is a Tuesday. My recommendation in addition is that should employees not become vaccinated by the 24th, either the first of the two-shot Moderna or Pfizer or Johnson and Johnson, my recommendation is an eight-day suspension. That suspension would be without pay. Mayor, I just I think that's the high level at this point. I do expect that I would bring back to you a report at your next regular meeting, which is scheduled for September 9th. And depending on where the numbers are, I may make further recommendations, but at this time, that is the extent of my recommendation. Mayor, that concludes my presentation. I am happy and I've got a whole team of folks that are happy to answer questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ortega. Any of my colleagues have any comments? Councilmember Ulrich?
Thank you, Mayor. And Mike, I appreciate all of the hard work on this and the consultation and, you know, received a good amount of information and answers to my own questions. You know, one of which is, you know, as an employer, we do have a responsibility for our employee's safety and for the public's safety. And the truth is, we already do require proof of other vaccinations amongst some of our employees. We've all signed up for public service as members of this organization and interface often with the public. And so I'm in support of this action. I do have a draft motion that slightly modifies certain elements here. And I provided that to the city clerk. So at the point that it's time to make a motion, Mayor, if you'd like, I can put that on the table or others can can share comments, whatever you prefer.
I would prefer that you put it on the table so we know what you're thinking, Councilmember Ulrich, and then we can go into discussion.
So I provided it to the clerk and I'm hoping he can put it in the chat for everyone so that you can it's it's long and I recognize this is a big decision. Want want you to have that in front of you. So is the clerk working on that?
We are working on that feverishly.
Hope you're not having to retype it. I'll go ahead and start reading. So I move that the mayor and council adopt the ordinance as presented by the manager, which approves the provisions of the proposed administrative directive, but with the following modifications. First, that in the ordinance, I ask that the revise the language in Section 6 relating to employee premiums for healthcare coverage to say that the manager is authorized to examine the structure of employee premiums as part of his current review of health and the the health coverage plan and to keep mayor and council informed about employee premiums and other plan issues as that process proceeds. Second, with respect to the administrative directive, to revise 4E relating to the level of discipline, to set the discipline as a five-day suspension rather than eight days. And B, in that same subsection, in describing the additional requirements that might be put in place for employees who remain unvaccinated after August 24th, keep in the weekly or more frequent testing, mask wearing and restrictions on assignments, and add travel restrictions to that list. And finally, third, as currently proposed, the administrative directive does not contemplate or specify any additional discipline in terms of suspensions or termination beyond the suspension for the first failure to comply. I think we need to see how much of an impact these policies have on our numbers and on compliance after August 24th. And so as part of this motion, directing the city manager to schedule an item for September 9th to update us on the numbers and data so we can consider whether additional requirements and discipline beyond the five-day suspension should be added for failure to comply. That's the extent of the motion.
Thank you, Councilmember. Do I hear a second to that motion?
I'll second.
There is a motion and a second, and I do see my colleague, Councilmember Kostachev. And then the vice after that.
I coughed. What did you say?
You could go ahead and then Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, after you.
Okay, got it. So thank you, Karen, for that. So start the discussion. Now, this for me, this is just a public health issue, that's all. I'm very sorry to hear what mayor's office experienced today. I've lost three friends due to COVID. COVID. I've got family and friends who work in healthcare. And around the country, around the city, right this very second, they're busy putting people on ventilators. They're holding the hand of someone with COVID because family members aren't allowed into the room, or they're running around from room to room in full PPE garb for 12-hour shifts. We all know immunocompromised people. We all know seniors. We all know vulnerable people who simply can't feel safe. And so I don't really want to hear about your liberty. I think the mayor laid it out absolutely correctly, that when your liberties infringe on the health and well-being of others, that's where your liberties stop. People are dying. This ain't a joke. We have children who cannot get vaccinations and they're filling hospitals right now. 97% of the deaths are from unvaccinated people. And the longer that we take to increase the vaccination rates, the more likely it's going to be that the variants are going to develop, new variants. Right now, we're fortunate that the that the vaccinations that we have work on these, work on these strains. And so it is absolutely preventable. To the city workers who have been vaccinated, thank you. The vast majority have. To the others, we can't force you to get a vaccination, but being a city employee is not a constitutional right. It comes with responsibilities. Mayor laid some of those out. The responsibilities are to your coworkers and to the community. This is, as Karen pointed out, this is public service. We're out in the community interfacing with members of the public. If left to me, I'd set a date certain, a deadline, and terminate anybody who who doesn't get vaccinated. The way the motion was read indicates that that may be an option coming back in September 9th. So to the manager's recommendation, the way it's presented, for me, it's not a solution. It's a half it's a half measure and half measures don't defeat viruses. It simply opens the door and, Mike, I'm not being critical. I understand you were trying to find a middle ground, but it opens the door for more variants to develop. And by saying we only need 500 employees to comply, simply is saying that we're leaving the rest of their the, I believe, your memo, you said that that'll leave about 500, 500, 600 people who are unvaccinated. That simply means that their coworkers and the community contacts are left at risk. And so my perspective coming into tonight is let's either do this or not. So the incentives are fine, and I appreciate what you included in your motion, Karen, as far as the discussion about the, you know, the other the other pieces of it. Allowing people time off as described in the recommendation is good because it shows that we're going to accommodate this on work time. We're not going to mess with people's private lives. In other words, work eight to five and then go home and figure out how to how to get your vaccination. With respect to the eight-day suspension and now a five-day suspension, to me, that's it. That's a ticket to remaining unvaccinated and continuing employment. You're saying, therefore, keep the rest of your coworkers at risk and we might raise your premiums a few bucks, we might make you wear a mask. I appreciate the effort to build, you know, that you put into this to to find a common ground, but we're 18 months into this thing and many of us are soon going to be needing boosters. And so we're going to have this whole conversation all over again. And if we get to 500 newly vaccinated, then all bets are off and the mandate doesn't apply. And so we've got 500 or 600 people floating around through the workforce in the community who are simply putting the rest of their coworkers at risk. So as I was thinking about this, it occurred to me that, you know, we're living through history right now. And I did a little bit of research and COVID is right now the eighth most deadly pandemic in the history of the world, and it's about to jump up to number five. And none of the other ones have the benefit of a vaccination. And I was thinking about the perspective people will have looking back on this time in history, and people are going to rightfully wonder, what the hell were you all thinking? Why didn't you take advantage of the science that you had in front of you? And by the way, three of those top five that are left in front of COVID-19 when it jumps up to five are three phases of the bubonic plague. And we're in the third phase of COVID now? So I want to hear what the rest of my colleagues have to say, but unvaccinated people are simply driving transmission and placing the rest of us at risk and the rest of the rest of the community at risk. And I think that the eight, five days is simply nibbling around the edges. And I believe that the ordinance should should say that get vaccinated by September 25th, fully vaccinated, or you forfeit your employment as a as a city worker. Now, because of the way the motion was read, we'll have that opportunity to talk about it on the 9th. But that's what we owe to our to our city workers. That's that's those who've done the right thing. That's what we owe to the community. That's what we owe to health workers, to the immunocompromised, and and to the memories of the loved ones that we've all lost. So I think the ordinance as written has appropriate medical and religious exemptions built into it. But we've acted decisively throughout this pandemic and and this ordinance as written, I don't believe is that. I think about Karen's motion because of that September 9th off-ramp that we have a chance to come back and talk about this again. But you you don't negotiate with a deadly virus. You tamp it down, you get rid of it. And the way to do that is through vaccinations and drop. So I would, you know, I would say just drop the 500 threshold, set a date and do what we need to do, but but we can't leave the door open for hundreds of city employees to continue walking through City Hall, walking in their workplaces and walking around this community. And I think it's ironic, and I'll end with this. I think it's ironic that some of the push that act that we're getting are from some of the employees who are most directly out in the public, police and fire. I was thinking about the many interactions that we have with both the EMTs and cops in the homeless community. So here's your scenario. You're out in Anza Park, you're out in Santa Rita Park, you're dealing with a homeless person and you're not vaccinated and you're and you're shedding viruses on this person. That person then goes into a congregate setting in a shelter and spreads the virus through the shelter. That's exactly what we're trying to get away from. And so I I would say, set a date, call it good. I appreciate Karen's off-ramp for the 9th and will certainly give that consideration as I listen to the rest of the council's input. Thanks.
Councilmember Kostachev, I I'm sorry I interrupted you, but I agree that the 500, the proof of an additional 500 city employees is a low number. I would say that we put that proof of additional employees up to 750 because the 1,000 unvaccinated city employees is just an approximation. It could be more. And what happens if we just leave it to half of 1,000, it really is an off-ramp, a free ride, where people could say, you know what, I'll just wait and see if my coworker will get the vaccine. I think we have to add the pressure of of those additional proofs, right, that instead of 500, it should be a higher number. So I agree with you on that. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just want to first start off by thanking the city manager and all of the staff and everyone for really coming together, the Labor Council, in a collaborative way to really address the problem and the objective that we're trying to solve. So I know that was not an easy task to to get everyone together and have these really difficult conversations. So I want to acknowledge and share my gratitude for that. Also want to thank the advocacy from the public and from our employees. As the city manager said, it's very valuable to be able to get that feedback directly from the employees and hear their stories. And also, I want to just say, heading into my comments, that you all know that I have the utmost respect and understand how everyone is getting to their decision. So regardless of how this shapes up tonight, I respect how you arrive at your decision. And and we all have different thoughts. So I just want to say that, that I respect how everyone is arriving at whatever decision that they make because this has not been easy. I've been having internal battles in my brain all week and it's not been exciting. And just before I jump in, just a really short point of clarification because I did do a lot of talking to a lot of different people, some including people who happen to own businesses. And there is a little bit of confusion in the community by people hearing city of Tucson employees and thinking we're talking about people who are employees of a business inside the city of Tucson. So I just wanted to set the record straight. We're talking about people who get a paycheck from the city of Tucson and work for the organization and the local government. So just want to put that out there because I did hear that from a couple of places today. I'm very supportive of the incentives that we've put in there. I've always been a fan of let's try to be encouraging and supportive and try the positive route as much as possible and see how far that will get us. The floating holiday is a great idea. The pandemic leave, I really see it as a must-have, more so than an incentive based on the conversations that I'm having. As you know, out here in Ward 4, we have the Vail School District, who started a couple weeks before the rest of the schools. And we've already seen, you know, classrooms shut down and parents have to work from home because their school, their classroom is shut down. So I really see that as an imperative part of the conversation that we need to have and have a plan in place. So I love the fact that we're talking about pandemic leave, but I think it's something that we absolutely have to do. Switching over to some of my concerns, I've always tried to stay very focused on the purpose of me being here, right, and core services, right, and delivering core services. And some of my concerns have been, especially with the influx of advocacy that we've heard today, if we're opening the door for a lot of people to feel like they don't want to work for the city anymore, I have concerns about our ability to deliver core services. And I know, because I've argued with myself all day, we could say if enough of our employees get sick, we still can't deliver core services. So I understand and I've had that internal battle. But for me, even with the five-day suspension, I feel, based on the national conversation, that people are just making the choices that they're making. And incentives, disincentives, might not even get us to the numbers that we need to be at, kind of what Councilmember Kostachev was saying. I don't even know if we're going to get there with the incentives or the disincentives, to be honest with you. I'm also concerned about the negative unintended consequences that would fall onto our vaccinated staff if people do take five days off unpaid. That work is going to fall to them. I also know if they get sick, the work is going to fall to them. Pick your poison. But those are just some of my concerns. And I know we all receive Chief Magnus's emails every week with our numbers. In the last reporting week, we had four officers that are no longer with us, going to different departments. And it's just a And it's just a big concern of mine personally and from our constituency out here about how we're going to be able to respond if we open the door further for some of our employees to walk out. And so I'm coming from a space of, of core services. Mayor, I have a child too, who is eight, who can't get vaccinated. So I share deeply that concern for how we balance delivering core services with being responsible as an employer and addressing public health. So one of the things that, you know, I wanted to offer, and I think this has come up as well, because I will just say, I'm not, I'm not on board with the disincentive piece. But what I am on board with is talking about the shared objective that we have, which is to do our part as an organization to slow the spread and figuring out how with incentivizing the vaccine, there's some little kids on the screen, incentivizing the vaccine and what other things can we layer back in across the board? Some of the tools that we had used when the transmission levels were higher before the vaccine to keep our employees safe and keep the public safe as they're interacting with them. So if that is masks for everyone, whatever those tools might be, that's kind of where I would prefer to go versus opening the door up for employees to walk out. So that, that's just where I'm coming from, from an honest place. And that's my comments, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Ortega, does Chief Ryan and Chief Magnus support the proposal that you put for us on the table?
Mayor, yes, yes ma'am. I had in, I've had several ELT meetings. I asked very explicitly and the support was unanimous from the department directors to mandate the vaccine, understanding all of the arguments and conversations that you all have been making here.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we, you know, that the public and my colleagues on the council are aware, you know, where, where the department directors are, especially those public safety directors that, you know, that, that lead very important departments for us. Every department is important and every employee is important. But I think that it's good. I'm glad to hear that both Chief Ryan and Chief Magnus support this plan that you've put in front of us. Councilmember Cunningham.
Thank you, Your Honor. Um, can we go over there because it's too loud? Thank you, Your Honor. My son's having lunch with me. Okay buddy, you gotta go to the other room, okay? I've struggled with this too. I've got, I, some of you I tried to reach out to, we didn't get a chance to talk to everybody because I just didn't really know where to go. And this is not easy. Anybody who listened to what Steve Kozaczek said, I agree with everything he said. If you listen to what Nikki Lee said, I agree with everything she said. And that's kind of where we are. That's, it's, this is not, there's no win here. There's no deal you can cut. A few things I want to say. Number one, we've got to really ask ourselves, the vaccine is really going to stop the surge and stop the spread? Inherently, it is. More people we get vaccinated, the better. Unfortunately, it's a moot point right now because everybody under 12 can't be vaccinated yet. We have some time before that has to happen. So despite what our best efforts are here, we're almost spinning our wheels because we're still going to see spread in schools. So that's the first part. Second part, is this going to lead to people getting vaccinated? Is this actually going to be effective in forcing folks to get vaccinated? And that's a big word, forcing. I don't want to force anybody to do anything that they don't want to do, especially when it comes to a vaccine that is not a year old yet. A lot of people have told me, I'm, I want to wait a year. And I said, well, I don't agree with you at all. You should be protecting yourself and protecting your family, but that was their, their thing. Then I go into these other things I think about, like my father. A lot of you know that my dad has had different health challenges over the years. And if he was to get into a, if he was to have another cardiac event and he was to get COVID from some of the persons that were taking care of him, that would be a real shame. So when I go through all this, all these things go out of my mind. There's a couple of things that I worry about here. Number one is, what about the folks that have antibodies already? If you've already had COVID and you've already developed antibodies and you're getting tested every quarter or every three months and it demonstrates that you have antibodies and you have some built up natural immunity because you've developed the antibodies and you're somehow keeping them, are they going to be subject to this? I think that's an important question here. It has to be answered. I think that should be included in the medical exemption piece. The second piece is, while I agree with the insurance premiums, and I think the sky's the limit there, by the way. And I agree with the incentives that we've laid out. I, I know that the county offered $300 to employees to get vaccinated. I like that. The other thing I like is, if you don't want to get it, you're really against it, I'm not sure that, uh, I think this, the suspension is the, the one that I'm struggling with. I'm struggling with it. The fact that we've cut it to five days, I think makes it a little more benign, but I kind of, Steve said it at the beginning, if we're in the gray area here, either we go all in or we don't, well, we're already not all in. So the point is, is that how many people are going to leave? And how many people are going to, um, how many people are going to leave the city because they got a five day suspension? How many are going to take the five day suspension and go back to work? I mean, I just don't know how much that suspension is going to move the needle. It's just going to create a lot of ill will from those folks. But then you got to ask yourself, the second part is, if you don't want to be a team player and understand this part of public service, maybe we don't want you anyway. Truth. Like that's just me talking out loud and just being truthful. Like that kind of went through my mind too. But right now for me, I'm a, I'm in support of the motion as, as, as directed. I think that's as close as we're going to get. I'd rather prefer it be a no suspension, but I think that we're trying to thread a needle here. And I don't know if there's a right answer. Either this council acts unanimously to get something done, or we're going to try to increase our workforce to be fully vaccinated or we're not. And I'm not going to be the one that says, no, forget it. If we're not doing it my way, I don't, I'm not voting no. I think that's a cop out. You got to, you got to, you got to be solid here. So I don't agree with this 100%. And I definitely want that medical exemption piece in if you're showing that you have antibodies. I think that's totally fair. But at the end of the day, uh, we, we have to, we have to act. Again, it's about public health. And if we don't, and we say, oh yeah, you know what, we're not going to do anything, the bottom line comes down to, when we're back to locking down in three, four months, people will go, what were you thinking? So I'm on board with the motion. I, I'd rather water down the suspension a little bit, but I know that, I think, I think you guys are right on target. So good job, Karen, for kind of distilling all the info. And again, I, I thoroughly advocate for the folks who have antibodies and can show that.
Yeah, that's a good question before we go on to the other colleagues, either Mr. Attorney or Mr. City Manager. We do have a study group that is working with the University of Arizona, specifically with our firefighters who are testing positive for antibodies. Can we work with that particular group that is really, they're going through a study with the University of Arizona as a medical exemption?
Mayor, thank you. And Councilmember Cunningham, thank you for bringing this up. I have discussed this with employees and even some of the labor groups. Here is my suggestion. I believe it, it can be a medical exemption. However, it would require that a medical professional doctor would say that, that these folks that are in that test, which I'm expecting he would or she would, that these folks do not need to get the vaccine because they're under doctor's care. I also see a scenario where an antibody test could be performed and the employee's physician will say to us, no, no vaccine, here's your, here's your medical exemption. So that is already a part of where we're headed. It is not specifically listed because you would need to get a physician or medical professionals exemption, you know, basically stating that in order for us to move down that path.
Okay, alrighty. Thank you for that. Councilmember Santa Cruz?
Thank you, Mayor. I know it's Friday and aside from just being tired of the week, I think, you know, this past year and a half has been really, you know, trying and tiring and so many things for all of us and, and even probably being at a place where we're having like decision fatigue because we're constantly, you know, having to scramble and, and, you know, try to become an expert in all the different things. So it, it is a very strange place and this is one of those moments that like being in the elected office, like everything's not so black and white. You know, you can see the complexities in everything, you can see all the different sides. And then at the end of the day, you have to make a call, you know, on, on your consciousness and what you think is, is best for the community. And, and it's, and it's unfortunate because I think we can all have critiques about so many things about how government operates. And I think I don't have to get into that because right now we're acting as an employer and we're making the decision, you know, based on that and what's best for, for our public safety, for public health in, in our community. And it's just unfortunate that everything with this pandemic and, and it, it might have not been different and maybe yes, but you know, we are in such a politically divisive, you know, moment that there's just so much distrust. And I think when there isn't, when there is, when that is lacking, you know, so much, we, we fill that gap with, with so many stories that we tell ourselves. And so one of them is that, I mean, my colleagues have already mentioned about, you know, like the individual liberties and the infringement on that as well as when it comes to like the collective, you know, collective good and when is somebody's individual liberties yet infringing on, on other people? And so I think this is one of those questions, one of those moments that we have to grapple with that. And like, like the city as an employer, we do have a lot of rules and we do have a lot of guidelines that we expect from our workforce and that this is one of those moments where we have to make a difficult decision and that it's not always going to be a popular decision, but we're doing what's, what's best for other employees and then also the public because we are public servants and we are having to, to serve the public. And we, um, we have to, we have to be an example to them. And so what I don't want to end up in, and I, and I know I don't, I don't want to get into it too much, but even around the testing and having the ongoing testing, it's like, who's going to pay for it? And I, and I believe that that would have to be us, you know? And so I don't want to be in a place where I'm having to decide that like so much of our ARPA money is going to have to go to testing and invest a big chunk of that when we have so many other needs, especially around housing and housing are unsheltered and, and so many other like public, you know, health related that can have a big impact across the city for just, you know, a few individuals in, in the city's workforce that we will have to like invest that in. So that's, I don't want to be in that position. And then lastly, you know, I think folks know that my parents, you know, I like, I grew up in like an evangelical home and my parents are pastors. And so even though we're probably on a different side of the situation because again, so politicized, I remember just a story that they would always share with me that, that, that I feel is very relevant, you know, to this moment and that y'all have probably heard it or some version of it where you have, you have somebody at sea that's, you know, lost at sea and they're about to drown and they're praying and they're asking God, you know, for like, come rescue me, like, you know, like you've said, if I believe in you, you'll come rescue me. And so that then a boat, you know, a boat comes by and it's like, yeah, I'm here to, I'm here to, to rescue you. And it's like, no, no, I'm waiting, I'm waiting for God. I'm waiting for God to come get me, like no. So they send him away. And then there's a helicopter that comes by and throws down, you know, like a ladder and it's like, hey, we're here to rescue you, you know, like jump on and it's like, no, no, like I'm waiting for God. And then this person drowns. And so they're, you know, in, in heaven and they're asking God, like what happened? You told me that if I believed that and I prayed that you would come get me. And God's like, are you kidding me? Like I sent all these, you know, I sent a boat, I sent a helicopter to come rescue you and you didn't take it, you know? So it's like, when is it that like we have these interventions, you know, in this moment? We have this pandemic, we have people with talent, you know, people with science who come and like, they're doing their part to like help us get past this. And we're like, no, you know, no, that somehow like some other kind of miracle is going to come intervene. And so I think, I've just been thinking a lot about this story and then as we're having to make this decision about like why it's, sometimes people need to get nudged. And I know that a lot of the folks that were trying to incentivize to do this are still probably going to like dig their heels even more. But I think that we have to stand on the side, you know, of like a collective, a collective good and our public health. So I'm supportive and I'm, you know, thank you to my colleagues and the city manager for, you know, trying to grapple with these difficult decisions and us trying to figure out, you know, the best way forward. So I'm supportive of this.
Thank you, Councilmember Santa Cruz. Councilmember Kozaczek?
Thank you. And so a couple of points. First of all, with respect to the antibodies, Mike, I appreciated your answer on that. When I spread some of those emails today, I reached out to some people in the medical community, Pima County Health Department and others and asked about that. And they said, we don't know the long-term efficacy of the antibodies. We don't know what, at what level they'll be effective. And so if I, I would leave it up, as you suggested, to medical health professionals on an individual basis, but I don't want to give a blanket exemption, exemption to somebody just because they have some antibodies. That's, that's one. Secondly, to Paul's point about watering this down, Fisher Cut bait, go or no go, I, I think that the eight days was watering it down. Karen wants to drop it to five. I'm good with that as long as we have the September, whatever the date was, ninth, yeah, ninth discussion to see where we are with it. I absolutely embrace and support the mayor's suggestion to up the number to 750, but then calling it 50/50 and good is just an invitation to more community spread. And so let's not lose focus of what we're trying to do. We're trying to beat a deadly virus and this is our part of the, part of the equation. And finally, Lane, I love your story. Here's a great quote from a Texas doctor to the parents of a COVID positive child, "Your child will get a bed as soon as someone else's child dies." And that's where we are in this community. And this council, I appreciate, Nikki, I totally appreciate your comment that we're all coming at her from different perspectives. And so this is not animosity between people, it's different perspectives and, but that this is really for the good of the community. And I really want to see our city workers step up to the plate and everybody get the vaccination unless you have a legitimate medical or religious exemption. And I hope we don't see a slew of road to Damascus conversions in the next 30 days.
Thank you, Steve. I have a couple of questions. Mr. Rankin, the ordinance talks about the condition of employment. So what my concern was that, can you please clarify whether non-compliant employees are subject to termination based on condition of employment? Can you explain that further, please?
Certainly, Mayor, and thank you for the question. If the motion as proposed passes, the administrative directive that will go into effect now does not contemplate or include termination as a discipline for failure to comply. However, as part of the motion, we, the manager's been directed to come back and be in front of the mayor and council again on September. again on September 9th, such that any additions or modifications to the, the policies can be made following the input and direction of the mayor and council at that time. The reason that language is used, condition of employment, is that it's a, it's a term of art in terms of identifying a failure of an employee that can trigger discipline. But that discipline doesn't have to be termination. So as an example, an employer may establish a condition of your employment that you report to work at eight o'clock and you finish at five. The fact that then an employee is late five days in a row doesn't mean that the employer has to fire that person, but it gives them a basis to impose discipline. And so what, that's why that language is used.
Okay. Another, another question I have is, you know, how much is the leeway? How many days do city employees have for them to go get a vaccination? Because some have said that August 24th is short of a time period. Can you talk to us about the availability of vaccination, whomever, Mr. Ortega or Mr. Rankin, and what the availability in our community is for vaccination?
Sure, Mayor. Thank you. So we have reached out to our partners at the county, and we are developing a list of, we'll call them pop-up pods now, that will be available. They are available and they'll be available next week as well. I'm also working to establish some pods that we would designate on the 23rd or 24th for anybody who, you know, isn't able to make it to some of the other pods. Now, keep in mind that there are pods that are open on weekends through some of the private vendors and some of the private pharmacies. And so that is, that information is available on the website for the Pima County Health Department. Based on the, on the direction from the council, we will make sure that the employees have access to that. And then obviously, we'll, we'll work hard to get something scheduled with either our partners at the county or a private vendor for something on the 23rd and 24th.
As I, it is my understanding that the vaccine is free and readily available throughout Pima County. Walgreens carries them, CVS, Safeway, El Rio, any of the pods that Pima County offers in terms of vaccination. Walmart, it is free and readily available throughout our city and our county for people to find it anywhere. So I, I just, you know, wanted to make sure that we are gathering some information for employees to, that have these seven days to ponder what their decision is going to be. It, it is, it really is readily available throughout our community and it, it is free. I do see Councilmember Fimbres's hand up, and then we'll go to roll call.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think the numbers are there. 2,468 cases, 272 deaths. There's just lots of things happening in our community. And, you know, I was there when the firefighters gave me my shots. It's a TCC, you know? And now we are seeing that the numbers of COVID-19 cases have risen to more than 3,000 a day in Arizona and Pima County as transmission rate has been raised from substantial to high. So I have some questions on this, and it's very dangerous, but we're responsible for the citizens of our city and our, and our community, improving the quality of life. And I want to encourage all our city employees to get the shot. If not, they have a valid reason to let us know about it and get it out. So at least we, we can deal with it. But, and I like the idea of going from eight day suspension to, I thought four, three, but I'd rather, five is good. But you got to remember, these folks have been with us the whole time. Last year and a half has been tough, but city services have been functioning and operating, you know? And I've said, I read a report, there was an officer of Phoenix, Glendale, and Bullhead City that all died because of COVID. And we can tell you numerous cases here that people, that the individuals have died, you know? So I support Karen's motion, and I will continue to support it. But I encourage all our city employees and everybody that's in the city that hasn't got vaccinated to get vaccinated. So that we can get behind this thing and defeat it. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres. Okay, I think we're going to go to roll call. But I do see Mike Rankin's hand up. Is it, is it, do you need to add something, Mr. Rankin?
Yes, that was an intentional hand up that time. Thank you. Just a couple of things. Your question about the August 24th date sparked a memory in me that I do have to read one correction into the record. There is one spot in the draft, the proposed administrative directive, that used the August 20th date when it was supposed to be using the August 24th date. And that will be corrected. It's on page three. Secondly, I know part of the discussion was moving that 500 number to 750, but that has not been incorporated in the motion. So if, if there's a desire to do that, that needs to, to happen.
Yeah, I accept that. Friendly amendment and an acceptance of the amendment. Thank you, Mr. Rankin. Anything else?
Yes, two more things. So I, I just want the record to be clear before the vote is taken, that by approving it under this motion as presented and as amended and accepted, it includes the approval for the incentives that the manager described, specifically the floating holiday to be used by the end of the calendar year, and the restoration of the pandemic leave in terms of the unused balance of the prior leave. Section 5 of the ordinance, just as presented, just authorizes the manager to grant the leave, but you've made clear that that's the proposal that you are supporting. So I wanted that in the record. And it looks like Karen has a question on that.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ulick.
Not on that, but I wish I would have phrased it as the first meeting in September instead of September 9th, because I understand there's some attendance concerns about the 9th. So if we could change that to the first meeting held in September, I would appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Ulick. And then Mayor, the last thing I believe that I have is, you asked about the antibody component. And I don't think we need to do any amendments, et cetera. We already contemplate a medical exemption. The manager described it quite well. I do want to note that the final version of the administrative directive will include forms to facilitate the process, the request for exemptions and/or accommodations. And the form for the exemption will allow for that process that the mayor and council already described. If a medical professional or doctor signs off and certifies that the, the person, the applicant for the exemption has a, a condition that contrainticates the vaccine, which could include the antibodies, and the, and the doctor signs off on that certification, then that will be captured as part of that process.
All righty, perfect. Councilmember Fimbres, you had your hand up, but we're about to go to a roll call.
No, Madam Mayor, I took it down. I just want to make sure that we're all in together and strongly support the city manager's recommendation that this is important for our employees, not only for our employees, but our citizens of our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Fimbres. With that, Mr. Clerk, you were requested to read roll call.
Ms. Santa Cruz?
Aye.
Mr. Cunningham?
Aye.
Ms. Ulick?
Aye.
Mrs. Lee?
I love y'all, but I'm no.
Mr. Fimbres?
Aye.
Mr. Kazachi?
Aye.
Mayor, who am I?
Aye. Motion passes by a vote of 6-1. Thank you all so much. We really appreciate your solidarity and your work on this. I know that all of us struggled to get to this point, but I absolutely 100% appreciate this, this direction. It's necessary. It is something that's good for our children, our community. And we are seeing what is happening in Florida, in other states like Mississippi and Alabama. We are see, seeing it come. There's no need for us to take it sitting down. We, we can fight this. We can do this together. And I hope that our labor council and our employees and their families get vaccinated and support the effort of us trying to fight this deadly virus. So with that, thank you all so much. And I hope you have a restful weekend and stay safe and healthy. Thank you all. And thank you, Mr. City Manager.